Roll call?
Yep, we'll be calling to the Court and start the meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals for today, March 19th, 7:00 PM. We can have a roll call.
Member Olson?
Present.
Member Duffy?
Present.
Member Maggio?
Present.
Member Bennett?
Present.
Member Crowe is absent. Member Lopez Hernandez?
Present.
Okay.
All right, and we might be expecting the Chairman to be joining at some point.
Accept the minutes from last meeting.
Do we have a motion to accept the minutes of the last meeting? Or any changes?
Motion approved.
Any second?
A second.
All right.
You have to make the motion.
Oh, motion to approve the minutes, any second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And we can get started with our first case, which is a continuation with 34 Bull Finch Street. I will be reading also the advertisement, petitioner Luis Nelson Romero of Edwin Romero, son, 109 Arlington Street, Lynn, Massachusetts, by his attorney, Daniel F. Cahill, "To vary the provisions of the City of Lynn's own ordinance to allow the alteration of a pre-existing accessory structure into an additional dwelling unit on a pre-existing non-conforming lot that contains a pre-existing non-conforming three-family dwelling in the apartment house district Class 2R4. The lot has 11,484 square feet of area, which is less than the required 15,000 square feet for an apartment house two."
So the last meeting you asked for two means of egress on the plans?
Yes.
You asked for a garage on the second level, what utilities will be provided, and a set of the floor plans of the structure which you sent by email.
Did everybody get a chance to look at those or receive those?
Yes.
Right. And we had already heard in favor?
You heard everything else, yes.
So all we need to do is any questions and then take a determination?
Yes, yep.
Is there any questions after the additional information that we received for this case?
Is there anybody here that wants to talk about it too?
Is there anybody here that would like to talk about 34 Bull Finch? Favor, yes.
Thank you very much. From the record, my name is Dan Cahill. My firm is Terry Tree Legal at Ave Exchange Street Lynn, I live at 20 Bel Air Avenue, joined by Luis and Edwin, who are the owners of the property. We're very excited to be back. Don't know, I did bring handouts if you wanted to see the floor plans in paper form. It did take us a little while to get the floor plans, architects are very busy these days. Thank you.
So what we're proposing is, this is a former accessory building, a garage. It's 11,000 square foot lot, underlying, that would pose eight, seven parking spaces, but we're pretty specific. The term of the plan calls for bringing back the garage to a two-bedroomed unit. It has two means of egress, the entrance of the sliding door, both of the living kitchen area and as well as the front door, the back bathroom area. This is an R4 district, so we can, the zoning board does permit
two structures on the same lot unlike an R1 and R2. Utilities-wise, this might be a challenge, there's quite a ways from the street to the unit. Upon approvals, we would obviously engage an engineer to also provide the utilities to water and sewer and the building department. We assume it's going to be a considerable amount of work because of the footage between the unit and the street, but that's something that my friends are going to make the investment in. Everything will be a nice little quality piece of property and still a lot of space, green space in the back, and we think it's pretty nice to build. Or addition, I should say.
Does anybody have any questions?
There's no basement?
No basement, this is a slab.
Okay, so if you need a pump, it would probably be outdoors? If you need like a grinder pump to pump the sewage out?
Yes, it would probably be an outdoor thing. Yeah, you don't know if the, uh, not a water, a civil
That's to be engineered for.
But there's got to be, yeah, the grade has to be able to flow correctly to the street, so if there's not, there has to be some type of component that pushes the flow out.
Okay.
Again, adds to the cost, but we'll see.
How far is the existing building off the sideline?
Off the sideline?
Yeah.
It's beyond the 7.5. On the site plan that we had provided earlier, it does show that I believe it was eight to 11 feet. It's kind of a unicorn of a possibly an otherwise densely populated area.
Do you want to shift here?
Or it might be, it might be on that zip drive.
In the meantime, I'm looking at the parking spaces, so there would be two parking spaces behind the structure. Parking space six and
Yes, it's, um, if you look at it, it's almost to the, if you were looking at the structure itself, it would feel like it's to the side.
Okay.
And there's plenty of space set backs from the rear line for the parking as well, and from the structure to the parking spaces.
And looking here from like imagery, recent Google Maps, those two don't seem to be marked, or those plan to be demarcated?
We're going to repave and mark all the lots, lines. In fact, right now, it's, there's not lined at all. And along the sideline, if there's snow and there's people who need to be brought off the street, there's additional, you know, emergency parking, we need to pull people off the street over the personal or middle, and the way it's set now, we could push the snow to the back. There, thank you. What is exactly the, was I correct?
7.9 feet.
Very good.
Yep, very good.
There's enough to push the snow in the back, so plowing will be easy, so folks can get in and out without any issue.
Okay.
Any other questions? Anybody else with more?
Our only relief is really the lots, right?
Correct, we believe that the design itself conforms with all the zoning requirements. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks. Is there anybody here to speak against the petition? Anybody here to speak against?
Motion to
To wish of the board?
What is the wish of the board?
Motion to accept.
Can I second that one?
Yeah.
I would second it. And have a roll call.
Sure. Member Olson?
Yes, to accept.
Member Duffy?
Yes, to grant.
Member Maggio?
Yes, to grant.
Member Bennett?
Yes, to grant.
And member Lopez Hernandez?
Yes, to grant.
That was Bull Finch, just granted.
Our chairperson is here, so now passing over the official responsibilities.
I need you to sign off after.
That's fine.
Where are we going?
We are on the next one, the next case. So I gave you one of these, did I give you one of these?
No.
That's who's on the cases.
Next one that we have is 231-1113 Ball.
We have a letter from EDIC too.
Yeah.
Wait, that was Bull Finch.
That was Bull Finch. Let me finish that one up. Yeah?
Yeah, you can read it.
Next case, 1113 Baldwin Street, case number 1005A, by Attorney Sam Vitale.
Now read it here real quick. "To vary pursuant to the provisions of the City of Lynn's own ordinance to allow the construction of a building to be used for a general office, a permitted use in the central business district, and a contractor's yard used not permitted in the central business district without city council consent with a building height less than the required minimum in the CBD. Three stories or 36 feet required."
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'm Attorney Sam Vitale, this is Eric of Eric Zee disposal, and this is Brandon from Wayne Alarm. And we're here this evening for two reasons. One is that for many years
How many, 30?
What's that? That you've been on Baldwin Street.
Oh, I've been there since 91.
I got Eric approved in 1991 by the city council for a contractor's yard on the other side of the street. That's part of the story. And Eric's business was so successful, he sort of went to rock star status, everybody knows him as Eric Zee. He has the Working Man's Kennedy compound, he grew up on Hutcheson Court, which is across the way. He bought his brothers and sisters' all homes on Hutcheson Court. He's been a fixture in that area. Brandon's company, Wayne Alarm, that tower, I'm sort of responsible for. Wayne Alarm houses the 9/11 system for the City of Lynn, and they've been there as many years.
Yeah. 96.
So they're neighbors, Wayne Alarm and Eric. This is really a story about two honorable men, Eric and Ralph Severnall from Wayne Alarm. They had a handshake agreement that if any one was going to sell the land, they would offer it to the other. And Ralph Severnall acquired this site across the street. And the plan now is this, Eric has sold his roll-off dumpster business, but he wants to continue for his brother Robert.
Yes.
And Mr. Severnall has acquired it from the city apostle and from others at 11-13 Baldwin Street. And that's the site where Eric is going to hopefully move with the city council grants and consent, because they're the only ones who can issue a special permit for a contractor's yard. The reason we're before the Board of Appeals is two. One is that in the central business district where this property sits, certain dimensional requirements, one is 50 feet of frontage, which this lot clearly has. The other is a building on more than 10 stories. But the one that we're here on, the dimensional one, is a minimum of three stories. So Eric's business does not have, and if you looked across the street, if you look at the photograph, essentially what you see on that side of the street, he wants to erect on this side of the street where Ralph has his lot. And the reason for that is this. It's to keep two businesses in Lynn. Wayne Alarm is growing, it needs more space, and this is a natural, if they come along and take the contiguous parcel that Eric now has his business on. The agreement the two gentlemen made were that Mr. Severnall would acquire Eric's parcel, and Mr. Severnall would allow Eric to move his business across the street to the parcel he has. The parcel he has has a restriction on it from the City of Lynn with respect to parking and landscaping on one portion. So the proposal is to put the building on the area that's not restricted. If you've seen the land, it's got sloping topography, and so when you take in fact of the size of the building, it does not meet the 36 feet minimum. That's the dimensional issue. It's about 20 something.
Centimeter.
Yeah. So, and this is a building, it's a metal building that gets erected. They'll build a foundation footing, they'll set the building on it. Eric's going to put a retaining wall and sort of screen around that area, because it's an area not unlike many in Lynn, in which there are businesses in close proximity with residential homes. Then if that part of the puzzle was approved, the second part is this, that in the current table of uses, a contractor's yard is not allowed to use in the central business district. Now, in 1991, I don't think it was when I went and got city council approval when Eric started his business. And the only real reason is this, the garage is big enough to pack trucks in, but Eric's brother's got what, three?
Three little trucks.
Three little trucks. They want to pack some of them outside. So when I met with Mr. Donovan, he said, "If you pop all the building, all the trucks inside, I'd give you a permit, but you don't have the requisite height, and the second issue is, you can't pack trucks outside." Well, Eric, I'm saying, I'm not going to pull the trucks, then they go out to the jobs. What Eric's brother does, and what Eric had done, is they do what they call cleanouts. They go to your home, or someone's home, and they take whatever people want to dispose of, and they bring it someplace else. They don't store it, they don't bring it back, and then they come back at night and they park the trucks, and then they walk across the street back home to Hutcheson Court. So what we need is two rules, one from the Board of Appeals, for height not 36 feet, and the second for the use of the contractor's yard. Even if you grant those, we still have to go before the city council, because they're the only special permit granting authority that can issue a contractor's yard permit. Since we need a special permit, we went before the mayor's development team with this proposal, and met with the city councillor, the planner, Mr. Donovan, the EDC, the mayor's development team, and they were anxious to keep Eric's business in Lynn and keep Wayne Alarm in Lynn, and they thought that the fact that these two people had worked out this arrangement among themselves, based on a handshake, was good for, not only for them, but for the city. Many of the employees of Wayne Alarm are Lynn residents, the people that work for Eric are Lynn residents, so we keep the jobs in Lynn, we keep the businesses in Lynn, we keep the payroll and taxes in Lynn. And so I think because of that, the mayor's development team supported it. I would urge the members of the Board of Appeals to give us the opportunity to go before the city council and to hopefully persuade them to issue the permit that Eric needs to continue his business, which will allow Wayne Alarm to grow its business on the site that it currently occupies and wants to now expand it.
Good, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak?
Hi, my name is Brandon Figman from Wayne Alarm Systems, located at 424 Essex Street, Lynn, Massachusetts. Just a brief background, Wayne Alarm Systems, family business, been in business for over 55 years. Right now, we employ about 130 employees, and by the end of the year, projecting about 145. And, you know, super supportive of this arrangement, as we are truly breaking at the seams and growing out of our current building, we need more space to expand. And we have super strong relationships with Lynn Technical High School for our technicians, our monitoring center, which employs operators 24/7/365, a lot of them are from the Lynn community as well. And we truly need additional space to be able to grow and continue to, you know, build the company within Lynn, which we've been in pretty much the whole Wayne Alarm Systems life, so.
That's good, thank you. Anyone else?
This is a letter, anyone else?
Yeah, we should read that. "To the Board of Appeals from Jim Caudill, Executive Director, please accept this letter on behalf of the Lynn Development Team in support for the petition of 1113 Baldwin Street, which is before your honorable body tonight. Two weeks ago, the development team met with the petitioners and their attorney, Samel Vitale. Members presented, present included Ward Four Councillor Natasha Maggie Madre, ISD Director Mike Donovan, Jeff Whedon from Elhand, CD Director Jamie Marsh, EDIC Director Jim Caudill, and Principal Planner Aaron Clausen. The development team members present were in unanimous support of this project. We respectfully ask the petition to be approved as submitted." Members, any question, concern, comments?
I have one question. It's a contractor's yard. Is there materials stored on the site other than vehicles?
No, it's kind of, what do you mean by, you know, dumpsters? We got, I got three, like, regular dump trucks going to be on it, and like employees.
Okay, so my concern would be that no hazardous materials are outside, exposed to rainwater, where it could wash out to the neighbors?
And in the building, I'm going to have a catch base, you know, like about the chaser rolls in the building on the trucks, you know, like that.
That'll all be done indoors?
Yeah, I'll have, that's all
Well, separate.
Yeah, I have them in my other building, catch bases and stuff, you know, and they come and they suck it out if there's any oil in the wall.
So as long as there's no
And stuff like that.
That's the way it should be done.
Catch base.
And what's your hours of business?
The hours of business are usually seven, 6:30 till about 4:00. You know, we don't really work over that. You know, sometimes we're only at 5:50, depending if we got stuck sometimes. But I know all the neighbors, I've been there since like 91, like I said, I know everybody lives over that side of the street and that side of the street. And everybody comes to me and I'm typically in my, you know. I know all the guy, all the people in your neighborhood are great, you know, and no one's ever changed. You know, maybe a few people moved in, some people moved out, but, you know, everybody's great, you know. And they can't wait actually to see that lot over there cleaned up, you know, like with the lot, it's anything lot, you can hot water it from everywhere.
All right.
And they want it all cleaned up. So I'm going to put, there's like dirt coming down, I'm going to make a wall, I'm going to make it nice, you know.
All right. Well, thank you. Okay, is anyone here opposed to this? Anyone else is against this? No? Switch to the board. I move to approve. To grant, as is. As is. No stipulations, so open to any suggestions for stipulations?
No outdoor storage of hazardous materials and probably no nighttime workout here.
Yeah, no nighttime workout.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, and you guys okay with that?
Yes.
All right.
Give me one second. So no outdoor storage of materials, hazardous material?
Right.
And no outdoor workout at night? And who seconded that? Ready for roll call?
Roll call.
Okay. Just want to make sure I get the right people. Uh, member Bennett?
Yes, to grant.
Stipulation?
Stipulation.
Member Duffy?
Yes, to grant with stipulation.
Member Maggio?
Yes, to grant with stipulation.
Member Lopez Hernandez?
Yes, to grant with stipulations.
And member Makua?
Yes, to grant stipulation.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Give me one sec.
Hanover Street?
Yeah. You want to do a handout?
Yeah.
All right. Next case, 98 Hanover Street, case number 10060. 98 Hanover Street, petitioner Stephanie Lander, "To vary the provisions of the City of Lynn's own ordinance to allow the conversion of a basement of a three-family home into an additional two-bedroom dwelling unit in the apartment house Class 2R4 District. Apartment houses are permitted by, in the R4 District. Apartment houses are required to have 15,000 square foot minimum lot area. Property contains 6,228, 1.5 parking spaces per dwelling unit. It's also required, the variance request requires that the zoning Board of Appeals specifically finds that owing to circumstances related to soil conditions, shape or topography of such lander structures, and especially affecting such lander structures, not affecting generally the zoning district in which it's located." You have a question?
Thank you. Yes, so my name is Stephanie Ladner, I'm the owner, and I apologize in advance, this is my first time doing this and I'm really nervous.
That's all right.
I brought my general contractor for all the questions, and I brought my dad, because he is my security guard everywhere. So the goal is to, like I said, to create that basement into another unit, into a two-bedroom. As you can see on the sketch, we have enough space in the lot for six parking spaces, which is one and a half per unit. And I should let my contractor talk if yes, or if you guys have any questions. He's a contractor, isn't he?
Will you just present yourself?
Yeah.
Hey, my name is Mario, I'm a 109 Corritree member. I was helping her to decide this new unit in the basement.
You guys previously had a chance to review this, any final questions for you guys?
Can you explain the two means of egress out of that basement?
Yeah, if you look in the plans, we got, in the bedrooms, there's going to be two exit windows, so it's going to be a secret for the two bedrooms right there.
You find them windows in both of the bedroom. And what's the space in the backside of large open space?
Crossface?
Yeah, it's just a crossface?
Yeah, it's a crossface here.
Crossface, crossface.
And how do you enter the apartment? Go out the back?
On the back, back corner of the stair.
Okay. So it has its own means of entering from the outside?
Yes, exactly.
Okay.
And it's going to be a separate room and chef for all the mechanical work for every single unit, so it's going to be all separate from the, from the rest.
So we would also be providing relief for the parking requirements? Seeing
Yes, six, it's showing six on the front, right?
Yes, yes.
Spaces of the parking, according to the surveyor, it's eight dot nine by 17 feet long, so they're supposed to be okay.
17, 18.
And to be honest with you, I thought that it would be possible just because our next-door neighbor has six units, and the one in front of us has
If, if, you're in the right zone, I think your relief has nothing to do with that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I know some areas that don't exist.
Questions of the structure itself. The only question I have in terms of the parking, that parking space number six, is that usually people, the left side of the
The one in the front.
Yeah.
It's actually existing, it's currently there now.
People just go straight from the street in there?
Yes.
In there, yes, it's right there, yeah.
So any other access to any of the other parking spaces are usually on the right side?
On the right side, yes, correct.
There's an overlap here on the block plan. One of the number three parking space also has a garden. Is there green space actually right there? I think it's, there's a tree that I can't see from the
No, long story short, I used to live in the first floor, and my husband created a little garden in there. Doesn't look good anymore, so we're technically going to remove that, but it wasn't big enough.
So you're removing the garden and turning it to a block?
And to a parking, yes.
So nobody is taking care of it, tenants, they don't
Okay.
We used to plan to use it back then.
Members, any other question or comment? No? Anyone else here for this project, in favor of this project? Thank you. Anyone here against this project? Here's the project, C9. Let's move to the board.
Motion to grant? I second. Roll call, please.
Are we putting any stipulations?
I think I am. No.
Second. So we have, just making sure I got everybody. Member Bennett? Member Maggio?
Yes, to grant.
Member Olson?
Yes, to grant.
Member Lopez Hernandez?
Yes, to grant.
And member Makua?
Yes, to grant.
Thank you.
That's the last one? There's the last one? 1696?
Yeah, you want that one?
I have 16
1696. You still got
We still haven't gone through it for a while either.
You haven't gone Brookline, and you still have the one at the end, Angle Street?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, next case
Okay, alright, next case, um, sixteen Brookline Street. It's, yeah, uh, case number one zero five nine.
Uh, petitioner Alexis Dubon, uh, to vary the provisions of the City of Lynn ordinance to allow for conversion of a single-family home into a two-family home in the apartment house class two R four district. Two-family homes are permitted by right in the R four district. Two-family homes are required to have twelve thousand square feet minimum lot area. Property contains three thousand eight hundred and ninety-three, seventy-five feet of frontage. Property has forty-six feet, seven point five feet of side yards. Left sidelines is non-conforming, one point five parking spaces per dwelling unit is also required. Plans appear to depict stacked parking.
Hi, I'm sorry for the, uh, informalities, it's my father Alexis Dubon and I'm his son Michael Dubon. Uh, granted, this is our first time doing this, um, so we're just appeared to the board to see how this would turn out. Um, he initially purchased the home, did some renovations. We noticed that the house previously was a two-family, uh, but the previous owner converted it to a single-family. Um, we came to city hall, asked for permission, pulled permits, we did the kitchen, separated the first and second floor. Uh, there's an exit in the back, uh, entry in the front where they separate both units. Uh, the driveway was kinda confusing, I think on paper, cuz there's no, I guess you could say formality in terms of a surveyor saying you have this much space here for this car, this car, this car. Uh, informally, you can park five cars stacked all the way to the back. Uh, in the front, technically you can park four, for a total of nine cars in total for the driveway. The left side of the house, uh, the yard, uh, the previous owner let them put the fence close to the house. I know that might be a little weird, but the neighbors were really kind, we spoke to them, we told them that yes, it belongs to the house, but since we don't need the space and it's not bothering us. Uh, granted, it is the board, so it might be for a better suit for you guys to request it to be changed, and so that's fine, we told the neighbors. Um, are there any questions that you guys have for us specifically?
Do we have a block plan showing?
Should we write them?
Do you see any block plan, parking layout they refer to?
There you go.
What did they?
I saw that all the surveys. We just have the mortgage plan, then.
Yeah.
The mortgage.
Yeah, um, yeah, we require to see that, that's, uh, I don't know, when, um, you feel application?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, you have to be willing to show us exactly.
Gotcha.
Parking they refer to.
Okay, so do, would we have to hire a land surveyor for the house?
To please, yes, to show exactly your property lines, to show the parking that are required and why you brought it.
Gotcha.
Alright, um, Dave, you have something?
Parking? Yep. Yeah, do not get any floor place at all.
Oh, yeah, and should be the, the floor plan for that second units.
So we did give them to the city hall, they had the existing and then they had the proposed plan.
Whatever's in there?
So previously there were five bedrooms, one bathroom.
Alright, give me a second, yeah.
Sorry.
So that's the second floor, not the, so what's the first floor look like?
So the first floor has three bedrooms and a living room and a kitchen. So, yeah, it was the existing for the first floor, so all we did was just re-add the kitchen to the second floor. And then you have three bedrooms, a walk-in closet and a bathroom and a living.
So, so what we need to see is two means of egress out of that second floor and how that's done. And I don't see some windows in at least one of the bedrooms, so I assume they're gonna be cutting in windows?
So they have windows as of now, um, and they do have, uh, an egress from the front and the rear.
Grant.
They just want you to submit it, there's a notch going in there. There's the balcony, there's a notch on the window and we only see an entrance here from downstairs.
Which, so we're not seeing, how do you exits out of that apartment? This is, uh, some, the kitchen is only showing the second, the new window.
Is that other staircase, does that go over to the outside?
Yeah, so the one, uh.
Yeah, these are all second floor that we, we see, we see, we see on first floor.
So, first floor, the second floor, like, in that hallway separates first and second floor, you go up the stairs for the first.
Yeah.
Actually, it's the second floor. On the back, it's the same thing, exposed out this door to go downstairs and expose out the first floor so they can exit as well.
Yeah, so we would like to see that first floor, so we'll put it all together, like, of things.
Seeing here from some imagery on the northwestern corner of the building, which is the bedroom that doesn't, it does appear here to be, maybe it's the plan itself that didn't account for actually having a window.
Yes.
So there is. Should be corrected.
Yeah.
Just add some of that.
But it's not being acted here.
There's a window somewhere here, right?
Yeah, there was a, my. Total of windows can be met down.
According to my father, all the bedrooms have.
They just need the windows fixed to qualify as a bedroom.
Gotcha, okay, so they do all have windows, but we'll put them in.
They need to be.
Re, yeah, re-edited, sorry about that again for the formalities.
Mr. Duffin, you have anything else?
No, just the floor plan for the first floor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it sounds like, hey, we should, I mean, you should consider this continuing until you give us exactly what we have before?
Sure.
Uh, how long does he need?
Well, I, I'd be as soon to get us, uh, drawing that he showed.
Can we ask for a month and a half, just to get the qualified people to do the job correctly?
Why don't he, um, notify me when he has it and then I'll send the fourteen day notice to the, um, butters?
Alright, so a month and a half, um, reach out, again, same avenue, same way you did this, and then we'll put your schedule.
Thank you for your time.
We'll have it.
Yeah, so just update the, uh, the first floor, floor plan, we certainly need that, and update the second, uh, floor, second floor. Show exactly how do you go in and out of the house, show you a full view windows and.
And then also the.
That's correct.
Parking plan.
Parking plan.
That will you're gonna want, uh, like you see a land surveyor to give you the logistics.
I mean, a licensed professional, it doesn't necessarily have to be, uh, a land, a land surveyor, it can be an architect as well, it could be a, uh, landscape architect as well. That's right.
I appreciate your time, thank you.
Need a motion to continue? You have a motion to continue?
A motion to continue?
TP, anyone?
Yeah, and then Mr. Duffin was seconded.
Okay. Will you let him go with it, you give him a month and a half to contact me?
Muck now, yeah, muck now is fine, right? Okay.
Let's see who's on this case. It's in Brookline, I guess. Maggio, member Maggio?
Yes to continue.
Member Olson?
Yes to continue.
Member Duffy?
Yes to continue.
Member Lopez Hernandez?
Yes to continue.
And member Makua?
Yes, continue.
Thank you very much, James, alright, Tom, we'll see. Right, next case is sixty-nine Essex Streets, case number one zero zero six one.
Sixty-nine Essex Street, petitioner Carlos Regalon, to vary the provisions of the City of Lynn Zone ordinance to allow the conversion of a two-family home into a three-family dwelling unit in the business district. Apartment houses are permitted by right in the R four district. Uh, apartment houses are required to have fifteen thousand square foot minimum lot area. Property contains eight thousand two hundred and seventy-six, plus or minus fifty feet of frontage. Minimum front setback of ten feet, minimum rear setback of fifteen feet. Minimum side yard setback of seven and a half feet are required. One point five parking spaces per dwelling unit is also required.
You have the floor?
Uh, excuse me?
You have the floor?
Yes, uh, as you can see by the, um, plans, I have, I can meet those, um, requirements. The parking space without any, without any interruption can be accommodated, six car without any problems and in, and in area to undo, do any, uh, snow removal.
Obviously, uh, they mentioned specifically, they mentioned all the things that are required, which is fifty feet frontage, uh, setback of ten feet, minimum fifteen feet on.
Dimension rear setbacks.
They're dimensional.
Yeah.
Seven feet of size, seven and a half feet. And then one point five parking spaces per dwelling unit is also required. I'm interpreting that there is a lack of parking, that they need parking relief as well.
Here is the, uh, the parking.
Yeah. Thank you. How many units?
Three, three units.
Three? Five, one.
Second question from two to a three.
Five, okay.
Again, members, any question to the petitioner? It looks like the dimension, uh, the, the parking is met. And a dimensional, pretty much it is what it is.
Are you demoing a portion of the building to get?
The, uh, the, the second floor is kinda chopped in half, because the rest of the house is just a, uh, flat roof. So I'm just gonna build on the, before, oh.
Okay.
So you're keeping the foundation?
Correct. I'm just gonna, um, support it. Accommodate the other third floor.
Can you have a parking board?
Yeah.
Just like all your head order to sell working. Exactly, really. Financial channels?
Yeah. Alright.
I would think this would, should be a certified block plan, yeah. Parking plan, yeah. What's the dimensions of those ones on the side, eight feet by?
Those, those on, on the side, I believe that, yeah, right now, I believe I measured eleven by, uh, eighteen.
That's what I mean, this says eight by nothing.
On the block plan?
Yeah, not even, this is by a, a designer, right? Block plan shouldn't be by a land, yes, uh, land surveyor or surveyor or engineer or somebody. I, I would think.
So you just want it certified with the additional dimensions for the?
Yeah, I think it should be certified with the length of the actual parking spaces, it's make sure we.
So similar to, um, the previous case that you just heard, right? Yeah. Exactly the same thing, so like, if you can just, or can get us a new block plan that's certified by a professional engineer.
Mm-hmm.
To show exactly all the right dimension, cuz your case is pretty straightforward.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, dimension are, what it is, you know, uh, to at least show us the, the, the parking plan and, uh, I think we should be able to move forward. Should we move forward with the stipulation or we want to see this prior?
See it prior.
Okay.
I can do this tomorrow.
With, with an engineer?
Absolutely. Yes.
So we can get you on the next case if that's a case we have a difficulty.
Yep.
Right?
Yep.
Alright, so that means you will have to come back in next month.
Is there a way that you guys can, uh, approve this with the stipulation that I can provide with, with the information this week? Cuz right now, I've been waiting on this project since September of, of last year.
But it seems like you already been doing the work over there already.
No, right now, what I've been doing, just cleaning it out, just the inside, because it was a mess.
Yeah.
Even how, I pull in the back and.
I, I, I know the, the property, so. So with, with that, what do you guys, uh, think here? It's the best, should we proceed with the stipulation? Cuz you'll still need, you'll still need that block plan before you can do anything.
Yeah, I mean, everybody else, that's.
If, if, and you're a hundred percent sure you, you'll be able to get that within a couple days?
Absolutely.
But that, that brings in a day, maybe, maybe like five days or something.
Right now, I'm working with a, with a licensed, uh, engineer and, uh, structural engineer, that I can be there tomorrow and they'll all do this for me.
The building is the same footprint?
Excuse me, is the same footprint as the other? Actually, I didn't remove it, but, because this one has an extension in the back, which I'm gonna be, uh, removing it to accommodate.
The parking.
The parking space.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
The one else here is in favor and I'm seeing one else here against. So, what's the, what's the board?
I think we should see, I think we should continue, like, see, like, even the existing site plan, isn't it? Like, existing proposed doesn't even show dimensions, I mean, what's the setback, right? This is, looks like a completely different building, I mean.
We, we can have a question about that, cuz the right side's not even shown on the drawing, so.
You don't want to be.
Yeah.
I mean, this is a two-story gable to a three-story flat roof. What's the height of the building?
This here system may not help of those. And right now, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna be shaving off that bit section in the back.
So you're going to be reducing from the building footprint?
Yes. Correct.
Not contact parking and then.
The back, the addition that it was, that is in the, that was put in there.
But you, I, you're not submitting this, but this is not where you're gonna be building?
No.
No.
Well, uh, something like that, I would do, yeah, I'm gonna square it out.
So you're also changing the facade of the, the house, the front of the house?
The whole thing, it's, it's a whole building, no?
Yeah, maybe you have to continue the board.
This is like a whole, I mean.
So, let me, let me just understand this, you're not, you, so you're pretty much in terms of, uh, the frontage, it's going from this, so roughly something like this. Flat, alright, so.
So right now, the same facade, it's just with a, with a flat roof from down.
So with that said, we'll, we'll also need an elevation to see if you're going higher or lower, because right now, we don't even see that.
Well, right now, if you, if you look at the peak where it is right now.
That's gonna be the top.
Exactly, so I'm not going any higher than that.
You are working with, uh, an architect or is it here right now?
Yes.
Uh, that's not how the height works, so.
Yeah, so.
Hides basically to the mean point of the roof.
No, it's in the, but, but.
So if it's a pitch roof now, it's not.
It's gonna go over the roof. Right.
Well, now it's going to the top of the roof, so it hides.
So let's do this, right? Uh, let's do this, by trying to help you here. Let's continue this.
Mm-hmm.
Please have your engineer.
Okay.
Put a set of drawings together that we need, uh, for your proposed building.
Mm-hmm.
The elevation, height, to show us exactly top to bottom.
Mm-hmm.
Proposed one, it's, it's not here.
Okay.
The, um, plot plan, showing all the parking spaces. And offset.
Okay.
Yep.
An offset.
Offset, correct.
Okay.
Uh, is there anything else? And, well, I'm, and I'm, I'm assuming your third floor layout will also change, cuz right now you have pitch roof. That third floor, the layout might slightly change.
Yeah, the layout is gonna be pretty much.
For the third floor? Okay, and that's not currently where it looks like now?
No, right now, the, uh, the second floor is, has a huge, uh, uh, space.
Like two, like it's like a two-story?
Exactly, on, on the second floor, yeah.
Alright, so we definitely need some set of jar to, to show us all this.
Okay.
And, uh, these are all new information that we get from you today.
Okay, I, I would recommend for the next, uh, meeting for, after continuing this, to have the architect, if you have the chance to come in to answer any question.
Yeah, if you can stop by.
Be able to provide an overview of what are the changes that are being envisioned, what's being planned.
Alright, you need, uh, next case, is that sufficient or you want?
Next case is, is sufficient, you know?
April second is the next one, then after that, April sixteenth.
April second?
Yes.
Okay.
I guess.
Guys, thank you very much.
Nope, I get it.
An existing block plan of what's currently there with the setbacks that are currently there.
Mm-hmm.
And then a proposed block plan of what you're gonna build with setbacks.
Okay.
It just looks like two, it looks like.
Two different buildings.
Completely different buildings.
Well, once I, uh, change the, uh, design angles and, and, uh.
Yeah, no, it looks like he's swearing it off.
Yeah, it looks like a nice future, uh, future beautiful building. Yeah, it looks like a nice future, uh, future beautiful building.
If you're looking at the building right now, inside of it is, is completely square.
Yeah, yeah.
And the other one has that jig, which I wanna just remove that jig and, uh, put a, a foundation to make it straight.
Okay.
So we need to, uh, yeah, true, full setback. Lower area ratio, we're good.
Is that good?
Yes. Guys, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I move to continue. For the April second?
Yes, April second. And we want... I'll email you all the things we want, okay? Is your email in the file?
Yes.
Okay. Elevation plans, including the drawings, um, elevation heights, the plot plan certified, the parking spaces on the plot plan, the offsets, the third floor layout change, the drawings showing all of this, and the architect come into the meeting, um, right here.
Yeah, I think, um, Mr. Bennett wanted, uh, the existing plot plan versus...
Existing?
The proposed plot plan, like both, so we can see the differences.
Okay.
All right. Just give us a second, we still have the board on it, just wait, wait a few minutes.
You're still gonna do it against, you're still gonna do against?
You want against the project that?
You still got...
Sixty-nine, okay.
I move to continue.
April second, okay?
April second.
Okay, second?
I'll second.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Second? Just wanna make sure I get everybody in the case. Um, member Duffy?
Yes, to continue.
Member Olson?
Yes, to continue.
Member Maggio?
Yes, to continue.
Member Lopez Hernandez?
Yes, to continue.
And member Makua?
Yes, to continue. All right, we'll see you soon.
If you could, if you could send them to me ahead of time, so I can send them up to the board, and then they'll know before the meeting.
Thank you.
Eighteen Engels, is it eighteen Engels?
Um, so we have, uh, eighteen Engels, uh, to vary the provisions of the City of Lynn's own ordinance to allow for the alteration of a pre-existing non-conforming two-family home in the R one district to allow for the use and occupancy of an additional dwelling unit in the basement. The subject property has less than the required square footage, eight thousand forty-nine square feet, or fifteen thousand is required, uh, uh, for an apartment house R three district. Um, this petition was approved, and we have a communication from, uh, Samuel A. Vatali, Attorney Vatali, um, CEO Chairman Makua. I learned from the petitioner that there is a need to extend the time for exercise of the variance granted by the board. Petitioner has been seeking estimates from sprinkler installation companies and needs to finalize an agreement, so he, he asks for an extension on his variance.
So just an extension, do we know?
Attorney Vatali is representing.
Yeah.
Well, that was a big experience.
Yes.
There's, there's two or three different proposals, because, uh, this is an existing law. So there are, there are all of the alternative ways to do sprinklers. So you're stacking across... So the one is what they call thirteen feet alternative, which is take the water, the maintenance side, the other way is the drainage system, the store water, the patient, to give it to, and, I mean, it's, uh, a little bit...
Right.
So, uh, how do we, uh, business district based cost, so, so, you're trying to obviously find a way that works and be, uh, economical.
Correct. Uh, next meeting, though, you want further allow, or you...
Yeah.
No, just need a six-month extension.
Just six months.
So what happens if it's not economically feasible? There's just no, no action upon it?
They can't leave.
And just...
Changing use of this facility, it's a totally different issue.
Okay.
Okay.
I move to grant an extension.
Okay. Everybody in favor?
Second?
Is this a roll call?
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a good one.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good. All right, you're good. Yes.
Thank you. Adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.